Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, September 24th at 7:00 PM. And tonight, we have a series of committee meetings. The first one of which will be the Committee of the Whole. I do have one new agenda item to add to the Committee of the Whole, and that is to briefly discuss that we will be looking at Halloween legislation, Halloween ordinances, and they govern the street closures and vendors licenses. To the best of our knowledge, that information is much the same as it was last year, but we do need to be in the process of moving that forward. So we may be able by next Monday to do that. The next item that we have has to do with public rights-of-way. For this presentation, and then also for the farmer's market, we do have presenters, so I want to welcome them both tonight for these presentations. And then we will allow a moment after the presentations for council members and administration to add any comments or ask any questions. And then after that, we do open it up, so that if anybody from the audience has any questions or comments, they may also do so. Anybody coming up, then, as a member of the general public, has three minutes to speak or to offer a comment or ask a question. I think that will explain most of it. We're not -- the one other item that's sometimes confusing with committee meetings, a question can be asked. The council members do not necessarily engage in discussion or debate of the issue necessarily that night, but certainly we welcome the audience's comments, and we do strive to find answers for the questions that might be posed, if they are. So without any further ado, we'll move on then to the public rights-of-way, and I'd like to defer to Councilmember Kotzis for some intro comments.
President Nysli, thank you and good evening. Title 35. So this is in our city code, and it refers to our public rights-of-way and how our citizens, how our public utilities should be using these rights-of-way. This is kind of a key ingredient to any city, where you have these areas where people can traverse and go back and forth throughout a town. But at the same time, underground, we have lots of utilities actually above ground, way above ground, when we start to think about power lines and things like that. And this is where this all exists. So as Chair of Transportation, I've been involved in some of the conversation, as administration has been looking to provide a tune-up and overhaul to this whole section of code. And so I think tonight, I mean, we need to kind of look at and consider what this is going to mean for our citizens, our public utilities that we need to work with and make sure that they can provide the service that they can to our citizens. And then also what it does for council, because I think there are a lot of sweeping changes within this work. But this is something that has been going on, actually, for a few years. They've been talking about it. Just in earnest, I'd say in the last year and a half, two years, they've really been working to really work forward on this and find a better solution to that changing conversation that's always happening as we move forward. So tonight, we have Lindsey Miller from Columbus Law Firm, Ice Miller, which was contracted to kind of help work through this whole process, and this is something that they do. And so I think tonight, she's here to speak to us about public rights-of-way. And Title 35. Right up there. Yes?
Member Kotzis, if you don't mind, I'm going to kick it off.
Please, I'm sorry.
I'll turn it over to Counselor Miller. Thank you very much, members of Athens City Council. I'm Andy Stone, the Service Safety Director for the city, and I just want to give a brief overview of this endeavor, prior to turning it over to Ms. Miller. So this has been a long road, no pun intended, while we're talking about rights-of-way. And I say that because when I came to the city in November of 2003, probably within the first couple of years of me learning the craft here inside the city, I recognized that management of all of the variety of things that happen in our public rights-of-way is an extreme challenge. And for years, if you speak to the law director, she will relate, that I have complained about our ability locally, with our local laws, to properly control our rights-of-way in a manner that's consistent with the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. And I'm specifically talking about not only those individual uses of the rights-of-way beyond the roads and sidewalks and our utilities that we have, but specifically, public utilities under the PUCO. Ohio law gives the responsibility of management of the rights-of-way to localities. However, Ohio law governs our ability to do so. ORC 4939 talks about public utilities, and those are utilities registered with the PUCO, and they have a great deal of right to be in the rights-of-way. And that's not without good reason. That's so that utility companies can bring electricity, and gas, and telecommunications to members of the Ohio public without being overly constrained by various localities. That said, localities have the authority, if they write their laws correctly, to regulate how those rights-of-way are to operate, when those various public utilities run through those. So about 2016, and it was kind of kicked off in 2016, and really, in earnest, all of last year, the working group did their work, and we're ready to bring forward to you now, here in 2018, a piece of comprehensive right-of-way legislation. Right now, it says on the Committee of the Whole agenda that this is Title 35. And up until today, we were thinking that we were going to replace our existing Title 35 with this new legislation that's comprehensive right-of-way. And that was my idea. And the reason it was my idea is because our current Title 35 relates to telecommunications. It was written in the '90s, with parts of it even earlier than that, and since then, through a series of a variety of state laws and federal regulations, has become almost moot in our ability to exert the laws that we wrote back at that time for telecommunications, like, for instance, the deregulation of our ability to franchise cable television providers. I mean, it's gone by the wayside with kind of supersedeance of state law, and that's what our Title 35 speaks of. So my initial thought was we would rewrite Title 35, keep the elements of it that were appropriate, and weave them into this new legislation that talked about comprehensive right-of-way legislation. That said, we realized, here in the last about week, as we were getting ready to bring this forward, that that created somewhat of a protocol burden, speaking to the council clerk, as well as the law director, about what we typically do when we redo a particular Athens title, is we cross out the section that is getting changed, and we insert the new language. In this particular situation, Title 35 would be completely crossed out, for the most part, and completely replaced, or repealed and replaced. And we thought that that might be a little bit too much to deal with, because there may be a couple of elements in Title 35 that people still want to hang on to. And so just this morning, we decided to change this and call this Title X, so you can insert it where it fits in the Athens City Code. I think 51 is open at this point. And then at some future date, we will move forward with a review of Title 35 and removal of those components that we are no longer allowed to exercise as a locality because of changes in state and federal law. So with that said, I'm going to turn this over to Lindsey Miller from Ice Miller. Ice Miller is a law firm from Columbus that has a particular expertise in public utilities. We've worked with them related to House Bill 478, which is the most recent effort between Ohio cities, as a result of the lawsuit that we were all part of regarding small cells. And they were representing that class, the cities of Ohio, in the lawsuit against the state legislature for passing an unconstitutional bill, and then the subsequent negotiations for a revised piece of legislation, which is House Bill 478. So that's been weaved into this legislation, as well as the other elements of ORC 4939 and applicable federal laws, so that we can have the most appropriate local laws related to regulation of our right-of-way that is still in compliance with state law and federal law. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Lindsey.
Thank you. President Nysli, members of City Council, thank you for having me today. My name is Lindsey Miller. As was shared, I'm with the law firm Ice Miller. I usually give the disclaimer upfront, that it is just a common last name, being Miller, there's no relation between myself and members of the founding partners. My address is 50 West Broad Street, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. And I'm going to build off a bit of what Mr. Stone said about how we got here, and what this ordinance does for the city of Athens. So the city of Athens was very forward-looking in starting to address this issue back in 2016. What we saw happen later that year, after our commencement of this process, was the issue of small cell facilities and wireless support structures within city rights-of-way across the state of Ohio, through, at that time, Senate Bill 331. And that legislation actually sparked a lot of cities across the state to examine their rights-of-way ordinances, whether they had one, did not have one, needed to amend theirs, or enact one. And Athens was already underway in the development of this ordinance, and so it was a very natural progression to weave in the small cell content that Mr. Stone mentioned a moment ago. So I'm going to give an overview of the ordinance itself, and really, the process of it, because we do realize that it is quite long. And so instead of going page by page, but certainly, we would be happy to answer any questions. As was already mentioned, Ohio Revised Code 4939 governs the public utilities within city rights-of-way in the state of Ohio. We also have to account for federal regulation. And in addition to that, we have to pay attention to what has already been passed or enacted or determined by the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio. And there have been several decisions over the years, and this ordinance accounts for and aligns with those decisions. So what this first does is, anyone who is a provider, as is defined in the ordinance, essentially as an entity that operates a system, which I'll go to in a minute, in your right-of-way, now has to follow this ordinance. So I'm going to scroll here quickly. Sorry if anyone gets motion sick. To "system." There we go. So as is defined here, I'm not going to read the entire definition, but as you can see, "system" encompasses a lot. Basically, from the traditional utilities, as we think of them, potentially, gas and electric, water, also to things such as conduit and cables and small cell facilities. So forward-looking, for example, broadband components that are going to be in your rights-of-way, some of which may already be present, some of which may not. If a system is present in your rights-of-way, they have 120 days after enactment of this ordinance to essentially file what we're calling a certificate of registration. And what that certificate of registration is, is it's your document that says you can be in the city of Athens's rights-of-way. The intent is for that to be a one-time grant, and they are allowed to move forward with being in the rights-of-way moving forward. You'll also see it called "public way," not in your ordinance, but potentially in state law. Now, what's different is, any time a provider with a system wants to construct in your rights-of-way, they do have to get a construction permit. So the certificate of registration is a one-time allowance, saying, moving forward, you can perform construction here. The construction permit actually details what they're going to be doing, what construction is required, how long this will take, et cetera, et cetera. For both of those, there are fees. There are application fees, and then there are also potentially annual fees for the certificate of registration. Those are created, again, in accordance with some of the Public Utilities Commission decisions. And so you'll see this language of "actual" and "direct" used several times throughout the ordinance. That is the direction that we've been given from the PUCO previously. So those costs, not only for granting an application, but for maintaining your rights-of-way, are considered actual and direct costs that then go to providers on an annual basis that have a certificate of registration. From there, as Mr. Stone said earlier, this ordinance ensures that you have all the authority that is granted under our state law and state regulations for your rights-of-way. So you're requesting information on an annual basis in terms of mapping, where facilities are located, to even make sure that as the city takes action that impacts your rights-of-way, that you know what's there. It encourages coordination of build-out. And then it also provides measures if you have a bad actor, if you have a provider that is not acting in accordance with what you would prefer within your city rights-of-way. So that is a very general overview, but I am happy to answer any questions that members of council may have at this time.
Yes, okay. Councilmember McGee.
Could you give us an example of what you would mean by a "bad actor"?
Sure.
Thank you.
So Councilmember McGee, thank you for the question. It's a very good one. That can depend on circumstance, and I'm sure that Mr. Stone could give quite a few examples. It can be anything from not notifying the city when they're going to rip up a street, to behaving in a way that stops traffic, or impacts greater property than they are supposed to be constructing on, or just generally doesn't align with the notification requirements that the city may require. It really will depend, it was mentioned earlier, underground or above ground, in terms of what the parameters are, but someone who is not aligning in a way, a provider that is not acting in a way, I should say, that would further the interests of the city in protecting your local rights-of-way, even though they are permitted potentially to be there.
I'll give you a very specific example. One of the provisions in this legislation talks about the double pole problem. So if you look around the city of Athens, in most cases, power lines have the highest point on various utility poles, and then below the power lines are located telecommunications lines, cable lines. Right now, the mechanism for the utility companies to replace poles, in most cases, is that the electric company moves first, because they own the poles. In almost all situations, they own the poles. Occasionally, there are telecoms that own poles, but for the most part, it's the electric company. They replace the pole, they put a new pole beside the old pole, they cut off the top of the old pole, and they leave the telecommunications lines on the old pole. Then you have two poles standing right next to each other in the right-of-way for a tremendously long period of time, what I believe is an unacceptable amount of time. My experience is that the removal of the lines from the old pole is governed by the utilities' pole-hanging agreement. So that is the agreement they have with one another to hang on each other's poles. And in most cases, those pole-hanging agreements say that whoever's the last one on the pole is the owner of the pole and has the responsibility to pull out the pole. Telecoms don't have nearly the concern about safety of their lines, because they won't electrocute anybody if they fall down. So really, the only time they get concerned is if their lines actually get cut. This legislation gives us the authority to make the original owner of the pole responsible for getting their strap-hangers, what I call them, from moving from the old pole to the new pole. So that's an example of a bad actor. I think Ms. Miller gave a couple of other examples of folks digging into the street without notifying, not putting back roadway or sidewalk or yard correctly, but those would be examples of bad actors.
Just a quick follow-up question to that, then. So there's a page 16. Who replaces the pole? Is it the original registrant? So say, I don't know, a pole gets struck by lightning.
The original owner.
The original owner does.
Sure. So in many cases, if there are electric lines on a pole, you know, my experience is that pole is owned by the electric company. Because, like I said, their regulations are much more stringent about how they run those lines than how the telecoms do. There are lines owned and operated by telecoms that don't have any electric on it, so they may be the owner. But in most cases, the original owner is going to be the electric company.
Other council members? Councilmember Kotzis, you had a question?
Yes, yeah. And I probably have a few questions, but I think, first and foremost, I would, and this is probably for Safety Service Director Stone, the revocable licenses, because I know that we're kind of adjusting some of our fees, because we haven't looked at those for a long time. What would that mean to a citizen that would, I mean, does this still impact the citizen that puts a bush or a fence or something in the city right-of-way? And how does it change from what we currently have?
Sure. So as it stands right now, city council governs those one-off uses of the rights-of-way, not systems, not these utility systems, but those one-off uses of the rights-of-way via the revocable license procedure, which they're individually approved by city council through standard city council ordinance readings after being reviewed by city staff. This governs everything from, you know, the parent mailbox in the right-of-way to a garage that somebody builds on a platted alley that maybe is not open to a street. And so those revocable licenses, in many cases, we find signs end up being the thing that comes through most often. In fact, I think later tonight on your agenda, you have a sign coming through per revocable license. This legislation, if you see fit, will move that approval process to be administered. And we call those, instead of revocable licenses, we call those special right-of-way permits. I don't know if you're able to scroll to that particular section there, so that folks can zero in on that. I think it's X.03.01. And if you see so fit, this will move that process to an administrative procedure. It does update the cost. Currently, I believe it's $150 for 10 years. This updates the cost slightly. And then I think it moves the renewal to seven years, if I'm not mistaken. I'd have to zero right into that. So, and it kind of, it governs kind of how we would compute costs associated with that as well. Right now, what happens is, there's a file kept at the code office, and when people file and they get a revocable license, they come in, they get it, they pay their fee, and then every 10 years, you know, the code office checks regularly, and when things come up for renewal, then they come back before, if they still have the sign there, if they're still operating it, and they come back to the city council. It is seven years. Seven years.
Seven years, okay.
$50, seven years.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's an annual fee. That's one of the changes in here. There's an annual fee based on frontage and the amount of right-of-way they take. So if a sign has frontage of maybe two feet of the right-of-way, they would have a very, very small annual fee. If they take, you know, 50 feet or 100 feet of use of space in the front of a property, say, for instance, someone is putting 10 parking spaces in the right-of-way, and so they occupy 100 feet of head-and-spaces in the right-of-way, and that's something that historically would have gone through revocable licenses, that instead, we'd get a special right-of-way permit, and then annually, they pay a fee based on that frontage that they're occupying there. Also, that annual review kind of forces us to look at those, and if they've changed, then they've changed.
And a comment on this, too, that, you know, in the conversations that I've listened in on the, we're just trying to offset what our current costs are. This isn't like a, you know...
We're not allowed by law to make money on them. We have to just capture our costs, you know? And that's very clear in the ORC and some of the various regulations that Ice Miller reviewed as they were crafting this, is that cities can't use this as a methodology to make a bunch of money. It's just to recover your costs associated with administering the program.
Other questions from council members? Yes, Councilmember Reisner.
Why is a, okay, as a councilperson, why would I want to give up the authority to issue revocable licenses? I mean, we only have two or three come before us a year. I mean, is our old system so antiquated and broken that it doesn't work anymore? I mean, why change something if it's not failing?
I understand that. I understand that position. And what I would ask you is, if that's something that you really feel strongly about, and if the council really feels strongly about, I'd ask you to look at that particular component of the legislation, and maybe adjust it slightly, as we're going through the legislative process, to where maybe it's an administrative approval or administrative review, and then a council approval. But I'd ask you not to throw out the baby with the bathwater and purge this entire 30-page piece of legislation because of a desire to withhold that particular authority. What I would tell you is, if we really went through all the rights-of-way, and we identified every single infringement that members of the public have, or property owners have in the rights-of-way, you would do nothing other than pass special right-of-way, or I'm sorry, pass revocable licenses. But what we've done, basically, as things have come, as, you know, revocable license has been on the books for about 20 years now, I think, and as people have come through the code office, looking to do something new, we would go and identify and go, "Ah, well, you probably need to have a revocable license for this and pass it forward." But, you know, if we go back through and did a review of everything, every porch on Palmer Street would have to have a revocable license, because the Palmer Street right-of-way is so wide. I mean, that's an example of a situation where, you know, depending on to what level of detail you want to get to. And so I would just ask that, as you look at this, if you decide, as a body, that you want to retain that authority for special right-of-way permits, that you just don't throw out the whole thing. We made this provision based on Columbus's law, and Columbus does these permits via a special right-of-way permit. So I didn't think it would be an issue, but as a couple of folks have mentioned, it may be something that you want to retain. So I don't know if you have any other thoughts on Columbus or other places.
The only additional comment that I'll add to that is that, any time we looked at another city's ordinance, we made sure to consider what would work potentially within the city of Athens. So just because we use the city of Columbus as a template, that does not mean that we just did a simple copy and paste. There was a lot of discussion regarding the sections that went into this ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just follow up, because you brought this up. What is the average size of a right-of-way here in town?
It's a great question.
From the center of the street?
Sure, sure. Well, you know, and it varies. So the narrowest rights-of-way we have here in the city are some alleys that are 10 feet wide. Certain alleys. Certain alleys are wider, but, you know, those are the narrowest ones. There's a lot of what I would call "paper alleys," ones that were platted originally when the subdivisions were laid out, never were constructed, but nevertheless, they're out there in the woods somewhere, and they show up as a 10-foot-wide alley. The widest we have, I think 5033, now that's state right-of-way, but it is, you know, inside the city, and we have dual maintenance responsibility, is pretty wide. Columbus Road, for instance, and that's one of the places where you approve revocable licenses most frequently, is 148 feet wide. And that has to do with an acquisition that was made back in 1948, when Columbus Road was built, I believe, probably because the Department of Highways at the time assumed they'd build a four-lane through there at some point, and then we all know back in 1970 that they chose a different route for that. But that right-of-way is still pretty wide. So, you know, it varies based on different places. Many cases, in the streets of town, they're 66 feet, right? There are surveyors' chain in width. So, and a lot of the places in the city, 66 feet, 60 feet. And a lot of the areas that were annexed from townships, like the whole area that, Mechanicsburg area in the south side, those were township roads at 40 feet in right-of-way, and so when they were annexed, that 40-foot right-of-way was kept. So the short answer is, it depends on the street.
So do I need a permit for my mailbox?
You know, we haven't treated that historically. But, I mean, I guess if we were going to the fullest extent of the legislation, I should probably have you bring up a revocable license request through this body for your mailbox and all your neighbors on the south side.
All right, we'll move on to Councilmember Butler now. You had a question?
Thank you. Thank you, President Nysli. Thank you for the presentation. This is a question for both you and Mr. Stone. In layman's terms, how would you, what are a few talking points for those of us in the audience, as well as TV land? What would be some of the few talking points as to how you see this empowering the city and making our jobs as a city more efficient and more effective? So for either one of you, or both of you?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Butler, thank you for the question. It's a very fair question to ask for what this would be in layman's terms, especially when the ordinance is so long. So first and foremost, I think the most important thing to say is that, as has already been summarized earlier, there are federal and state guidance in terms of what cities can do. And this ensures that the city of Athens exercises its authority to the greatest extent that it can, in accordance with those state and federal laws. In addition, what we foresee happening in the future is that there are likely going to be more entities trying to utilize your rights-of-way than currently do. And so this gets an ordinance in place that gives you all a process, a fee recovery mechanism, as well as records retention for existing and future entities within your rights-of-way, to ensure that you can monitor what is there, the condition that it's in, and whether or not the rights-of-way even has space to accommodate such facilities. The right-of-way ordinance as well also ensures that you're protecting your local health, safety, and welfare from these facilities and where they may be placed. And it gives you all a set of tools, as I mentioned earlier, to ensure that folks that are utilizing your rights-of-way, which is something that they are granted to do, do so in accordance with your requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, to kind of add to that, I think something that has really kind of accelerated things are the small cell facilities, which is something that, when HB 331 came along, and then now HB 478, which, there was a lot of conversations going on throughout the state. I was privy to some of those conversations. City manager Dana McDaniel's kind of led the charge. Ice Miller was involved. The telcos were involved as well, and it was an interesting process to go through. The small cell, and this is cellular, so it's, and these are, you won't, feel free to read AAA within a piece of legislation that you've got up there. One and two speaks to small cell. One and two speaks to small cell facilities, and, but these small cell facilities can be hung on, initially, could have been hung on just about anything, to include lampposts and other things. So, I think it was well crafted and well worked through with the telecommunications, telco, as well as, as cities throughout the state. Cleveland, Columbus, even Athens, we were involved in part of that process to kind of come up with a good solution for everyone. But that really kind of facilitated, facilitated things to move much more fast on public right-of-way. But as Andy Stone was saying, this is something that he's had to deal with, struggle with for a long time.
Good question from Councilmember Crowell.
Ms. Miller, have you worked on similar-sized communities like Athens on a legislation like this before?
Yes, so Councilmember Crowell, we have worked, we are currently working with, I would say approximately 20 municipalities across the state that range in size. On this particular ordinance, there are some that already have a version of an ordinance in place that we've worked with historically. As was mentioned, we worked with approximately 50 cities in the Senate Bill 331 litigation, and several of those regarding rights-of-way moving forward. One of the pieces that's really important to note about the city of Athens, when we look at small cell facilities and wireless support structures specifically, is that, generally speaking, with southeast Ohio, certain cities are not going to see that infrastructure put in place for the next few years. How long, I cannot say. The city of Athens is different, though, because of the presence of Ohio University. And so you all are much more likely to see this infrastructure, if you aren't already, come to town locally to provide additional wireless service. So yes, we're working across the state.
Is there any, you know, litigation? Are the telecommunication companies looking at these and, and finding, you know, finding problems with them and taking them, us to court, or?
Councilmember Crowell, that's a, an excellent question, and one I probably should have set up front. So, in addition to the long process of actually crafting this, there was a period in which the, the draft was provided to utilities and telecommunications companies, for them to review and provide feedback, and then discuss with the city directly what their concerns may be. I think there was even a secondary opportunity for them to do so, and that was all considered in crafting this ordinance. And so, we typically don't see the utilities bring the cities that we work with to court, and they've had a lot of opportunity to comment on this one.
Thank you. We, we work hard, especially Call me Gas and American Electric Power, which, you know, we all need gas, we all need electricity. You know, we weren't going to create a piece of legislation that's just a giant barrier to them, you know, because we work with those folks every day. So, we made a point, now they're not happy, they would rather just do what they wanted, without any process at all, but, but, but I think that we're not in any type of, you know, I hate to speak for the attorneys, but I don't think we're any type of legal jeopardy from passing this.
Those typical utilities, typical, I, I wouldn't be as concerned about, I, I, it's the language of the, more the telecommunications and the small cell that I don't understand all of the ramifications of that, and.
Well, we did try to craft a, kind of a universal piece of legislation, because, you know, at the end of the day, you're still in the right-of-way, whether you're a gas line, or you're a small cell antenna. And so we tried to create a piece of legislation that worked for all of them.
Thank you.
Other, yes, Councilmember McGee. Before, wait a minute, before I do that, I want to give everybody else the opportunity, and I believe Councilmembers Fall, if you asked a question, and Grace, before we return for round two of questions.
These are two quick questions, and thank you. And thank you.
Okay.
For the questions, so, the first one concerns tree trimming, for the provision there which might affect some citizens. I noted that there was something in the proposed ordinance that would say that any tree trimming should comply with rules, regulations promulgated by your office. I just wondered, do you currently have those rules and regulations? And, and then the second question, if I could ask the counselor, it deals with the insurance and the bond aspect of this. I know that the city is covered by the requirement that any applicant have bond, or have insurance that would basically cover the city for liability. My question is, is there any requirement that would require the applicant to have some sort of bond that the city could actually go after if that applicant turned out to be, as you said, a bad actor? So, those are the two questions. Thank you.
Can you speak to the bond one first, and I'll take the tree one in a minute.
Thank you.
Councilmember McGee, thank you for the question, and I'm quickly looking for the, the applicable provision, but generally speaking, yes, there are bonding requirements within the ordinance. Those are left somewhat general within here, but what is contemplated within the definitions I can at least go to are a removal bond. So this is in the instance in which a provider no longer is using their facilities within your rights-of-way, and it needs to be removed. And then there is also a construction bond. And this is to ensure that they properly complete their construction, as well as repair and repair of the affected right-of-way.
Thank you.
Speaking of trees, so, so, you know, trees are most challenging as it relates to electric line. And we know that most of our controversies surrounding electric lines in the rights-of-way has to do with the, the maintenance trimming that the utility companies do, and oftentimes their contractors do, around those electric lines. As far as a set of regulations or guidance that we, we do not publish any from the administration as it stands now, we do work with ODNR Urban Forester, and, and attempt to get our utility companies to follow best management practices when it comes to trimming, particularly the way they trim particular branches and such. The electric company has separation requirements that they have, and so the, the, those two come into conflict from time to time, in that the separation, depending on the voltage of the particular line, is greater than the amount of separation that exists with a particular tree, once it gets to a particular size. And so the, the cutting ends up looking, you know, kind of bad, sometimes, as they cut those trees back, short of removing the tree entirely. You know, this does give us more authority as, as it relates to that. Another thing that American Electric Power isn't particularly thrilled about, but, you know, they recognize that that's a, that's a concern here in the, in the city.
And Councilmember Fall?
Thank you. I think to follow up on what Councilmember Reisner was saying, that it may seem, I don't know, it's small, or something where the council is, is doing due diligence and looking at the right-of-ways through the council process. And I appreciate the, the, the idea that you can separate out, because I, and we have talked about this before, earlier, that I think that people are, understand all the, the utility, and it makes sense to have this most stringent, most feasible way to protect the city. And I think what you're looking at, and the change in your XX legislation helps to go towards that. I understand that. I also appreciate the fact that there is some controversy about giving up council rights and council improvement. And I think that for certain situations, we as council have had a lot of differences in some of the right-of-way discussion. And so some of those had more, more transparency and more sunshine than other processes would have been. So I think that, you know, we can look at, at, I, I wouldn't want to, you know, put the baby out with the bathwater, because that seems like a way that we can work together, though, in looking at some of these right-of-way issues, which do have a lot more visual impact or use impact on some of the neighborhoods. And I think that, that that's good, because, you know, administrations change, and having some council overview is probably a, a good idea. And how that would happen, I don't know. You know, it could be where council approves certain right-of-ways, mostly I'm thinking of the signs, you know, we've talked about banisters and porches, you know, those were, not porch, what was the one, overhang? That was really controversial. And I think that we can look at it, maybe looking at council approval, and then maybe renewals becoming automatic, because I agree, having to necessarily go and look at every year which ones are coming up. So maybe we can look at something along those lines, so everybody gets a little, a bit of, of what we need, and what I feel I need to, to just have some kind of voice for the, the neighborhoods.
Sure. Sure. No, I, I welcome the participation of council members, if you want to dive in specifically to that, that special right-of-way permit category, and, and look at the process that we've established in here. And again, I just, I, I honestly wasn't expecting that particular item to be a, an issue. You know, as we were writing this, I figured you'd want to pass that off, but if you don't want to, look, figure out a way to work in council approval to that provision, and, and we can move forward.
Right.
I think where I would be most concerned is if you were looking at particular aspects related to some of the registrants that are operating systems in the right-of-way, because as Ms. Miller relayed earlier, several pieces of state and federal legislation implement timeframes, how quickly we have to respond to a utility that is asking to do something. And I'd hate for the legislative process to just go through its normal readings, saying, hey, we're retaining this authority, and then the utility goes, guess what, you missed your deadline, we're doing it anyway. And so I'd ask that you kept that as an administrative process. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And Councilmember Grace, any comments or questions?
No.
Okay. I think we'll probably sum up, I do want to allow the audience, is there anyone who wants to ask a question or speak to that? Okay, Mr. Delak, three minutes, you can come up to the podium, name an address, and if you represent a group. Thank you.
I'm Rob Delak, 124 Morris Avenue, in, here in the city of Athens. So, the one thing that's come to mind, hearing a discussion about the city's rights and ability to regulate its right-of-way, is something that may or may not be related to what you've done with legislation, is the potential in this city for bike share and scooter share. So the possibility would be a company come in overnight even, like has happened in Columbus and other cities, and dropped scooters in the city, on the city rights-of-way, on their sidewalks even. And that's a rental system, then, where individuals rent that, it's essentially a company using the city's right-of-way. I'm not sure if there's anything in legislation right now that would allow the city to regulate that, or enable the city to better control that, and if this addresses that. Any thoughts on that? Or am I allowed to ask a question if it's answered right?
Yeah, it's a great question.
Yeah, it's a good question.
We've talked about it. We've talked about it a lot, actually, because.
But uptown, they would have to follow the walk-your-wheel, walk-your-wheel rule.
Yeah, there, there are other provisions in our city code that govern kind of operation of some of these things like that. And I'm not quite sure that, that this particular legislation would govern that specifically, because it's not really operating a system in the right-of-way, it's, it's conducting a business and then leaving it somewhere in the right-of-way. I, you know, I'm, I don't know, I might, have you, have you guys dealt with the, the bike share programs and the, and the explosion of scooters in Columbus?
We won't, we won't put you on the spot too much. And this will probably be the final question, unless we've got something more from the audience, too.
Well, thank you. It is a good question, and one that's certainly coming up in cities around the state. As you all may be aware, the city of Columbus passed a separate ordinance related to the use of the scooters, the electric scooters that were present in the city. I would agree with Mr. Stone that this ordinance, as contemplated, was intended for more, less mobile facilities than a bike share or a scooter program would entail. I think it would be different, however, if it was a bike share that had a dock in which those were going to be set up around the city in the rights-of-way. But typically, that is not something that is accounted for in these ordinances. These are more related to, as Mr. Stone said, systems and utility systems particularly.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Thanks for everybody's comments and questions. We've not seen anybody else who wants to speak from the audience. We'll move on to the farmer's market. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Miller, for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have Leslie Schaller, who's here to give us an update on the farmer's market. Welcome, welcome.
President.
Yes. Good to see you.
Okay. So, I'm hoping that we can have more of a conversation here tonight. I do have just a, a few slides that will hopefully give you guys a, a highlight of the work that's been really, in I would say, play for, for many years, if, I wouldn't even say decades, at this point in time. So I really want to appreciate and acknowledge the city administration, Mayor Patterson and his staff have been very critical in moving this project forward, securing this funding from the USDA that we started with in 2018. That said, Councilmember Fall has also been very crucial in helping us think through some of the, the planning points that we need to be making over the next year. So my name is Leslie Schaller, I'm the Director of Programs at the Appalachian Center for Economic Networks, just the short ACNET intercommercial. If you haven't had an opportunity recently to come visit us at 94 Columbus Road, I would certainly encourage folks to, to come join us and take a tour. ACNET works all throughout Ohio and central Appalachia, but we always appreciate the opportunity to, to partner with the city of Athens and other entrepreneurial beneficiaries within the city limits and within Athens County, because Athens is our home, and, and we really like to see opportunity moving forward. So for those of you who might have that sense of deja vu, we really started working on this project, and I think secured the first round of funding back in 2004. And that was in a period of time where the Athens Farmer's Market, and many of the other entrepreneurs, makers, and artisans were starting to develop, I would say, more capacity in terms of market venues. So although we like to talk about this project as the Athens Farmer's Market project, I want us to think a little bit bigger, because what we're really contemplating, I think, is more public space for markets and for public activities to happen in many different ways. Obviously, the Athens Farmer's Market membership has a tremendous sense of urgency, that at some point in time, they have a permanent location that they feel secure in, that provides more amenities for both them as member vendors, as well as the customers that they serve. I think we all recognize that the Athens Farmer's Market has become this incredible regional destination. And to a large extent, the purpose, I think, of this project right now has been to really focus on three goals. Many of us have talked about finding a permanent location for the Athens Farmer's Market, and I would say their partnership with the Athens Art Guild has also been very important in recent years. They have quite a synergistic, synergistic relationship and share space currently in the location of the parking lot of the market on state. So what we're attempting to do with this two-year USDA Farmer's Market Promotion Program grant is to really work with the city of Athens and many of the other partners who would benefit, I think, from the development of public market space. We're in the early stages. This is a planning grant. To a large extent, we've been working with the staff at Arts, Parks, and Rec. We've been working with our city planner, Paul Logue. Again, we definitely appreciate council and the administration's input in this process. But to a large degree, I think we still need to determine, is the development of a public market space on city property, preferably on the campus at the community center, really something that's going to be number one, financially viable for the city, because we have to generate revenue, and we have to make sure that it meets the needs of a wider population base. And then I think we've also discovered, over the years of working on this project, that there's still a lot of opportunity to develop more capacity at all leadership levels. So the market association, for those of you who are regular shoppers at the market, you've probably seen the market evolve over the years. We have, I would say, a very strong executive committee of the market membership, they're meeting more regularly. And I think in many ways, with the assistance of the Athens County Foundation, over the last couple of years of convening a lot of the different stakeholders, from customers to agencies to nonprofits, to the market association, we've seen this incredible growth occur in terms of the, the market becoming more businesslike and really focused on their own market plan. So ACNET always helps entrepreneurs, especially entrepreneurial networks. I think probably we're best known for a lot of the interventions and the resources that we leverage within our food and farm economy. So this project has been something that's always been. So, this project has been something that's always been very important to ACNET and I think the entrepreneurs who also use our facilities, both our Nelsonville Food and Farm Enterprise Center, as well as the longstanding Food Venture Center that's operated on Columbus Road since 1996. So, how are we moving forward? Well, we have two great consultants that were written into the application and the USDA funding that we secured. Some of them are folks that we've worked with in the past, the Project for Public Spaces. If you're not familiar with this organization, they have a whole sector within their development work focused on farmer's markets and public markets. We've already had some of their staff members come and visit, many of them had worked with us back in 2004 through 2007, really developing more market capacity. The other longtime consultant that we've had a relationship with is Darlene Woolnick, and she's part of the Farmer's Market Coalition, which is really the practitioners organizations of farmer's markets across the U.S. And full disclosure, I was on the board for many years in the early stages of the Coalition's development. So, these are two critical resources that I think ACNET and the city of Athens really anticipate learning from and working with, not just to get their expertise and to really assist the possible vendors using public space, but also identifying resources. Viability is really important. As an entrepreneurship organization, we want to make sure that as we go through this next stage of planning, that we will be able to make something that's permanent and that is beneficial to everyone within our community. So, hopefully, at the end of the planning process, we will have more information on the possible sites, we'll have, hopefully, additional assistance from the USDA. They offer a variety of different site and architectural services, free of charge, to folks that have been funded through the program. And I would say there'll be two levels of business plans completed, one for the Athens Farmer's Market Association and one for the viability of a public market. So, just some of the activities that have taken place at this stage, we've had a lot of planning meetings between all the partners, we heard about the funding at the end of 2017. So, a lot of the timeline of activities really has proceeded from January on. We had a spring visit with the staff from, oh, I had a little mistake there, from PPS, or the Project for Public Spaces. There have been frequent meetings between ACNET staff and the leadership, as well as the annual member meetings of the Athens Farmer's Market. So, business planning is underway, ad hoc committees have been formed, as well as some of the other marketing and fundraising focus for the Market Association as well. And then if you are a regular shopper at the Market, you might have noticed that, starting this summer, we've been doing monthly surveying and data collection at the Market. We had an extraordinary gift, a Summer Vista, Kimberly Aston, who now is our work-study staff member at ACNET, too, and she's really helped us with a lot of the organization of the data collection. So, again, many thanks to Ohio University for allowing us to continue with Kimberly after she finished her Summer Vista. We're identifying funding resources, so obviously, a project of this type is going to need considerable investment. We know that there's not a big nest egg in the city budget to invest in this project. So, again, that's one of the expertise I hope that ACNET and our partners can bring to the table, is really identifying a variety of different funding streams. So, if we've determined that there's viability for this project, we can move forward and start to secure money for site surveying, implementation at some level, hopefully, I always, fingers crossed, at some point in 2019. The Athens Farmer's Market has been very active, perhaps sometimes maybe a little too active for our mayor and for our city planner, in terms of the feedback and the input that they would like to offer. So, there's a level of eagerness and, I would say, engagement that is always part of this project. So, what we wanted to do was come here tonight and sort of give you an update. Obviously, any development of this type will take some time, we're getting ready to host some public forums, hopefully later this fall, and we just wanted to make sure that that sense of inclusion and transparency is being met at all levels. We have had some recent meetings with the Far East Side Neighborhood Association and with some of the other groups that might have issues or concerns about development along the East State Street corridor. So, we all, again, wanted to make sure that council was aware that these communications are happening and that ACNET and our partners really want to make sure that everyone has a sense of how this project is going to move forward and that there will be ample opportunity for input all along the way.
Okay. Questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Fall?
Thank you, Leslie. I think that this process, as you note, is in the very, very beginning. So, that's to say that there'll be ample time, and I very much appreciate that you recognize that all the stakeholders. And the farmer's market is very close to, almost, nobody I know would just give their left eye to be able to provide an amazing space, because it's an amazing market. And so I think that through this process, we'll be able not only to help identify those opportunities for the farmer's market, but going forward, we can also identify those other opportunities for this space, because it could be not only a farmer's market, but, as you say, a general market, but it could be a maker's space, a festival space. So, going forward, it's much more of a comprehensive look than just looking at the farmer's market when we're going through this process. So, I just want to emphasize that, too. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Cottis?
Yes, thank you. So, you know, looking forward, then, do you have kind of like a set timeline when you might show up here with more details, or, I mean, I mean, do you have, I mean, it sounds like you have plans to do some outreach over the fall, the business plan, how long are you anticipating some of this stuff to take?
Thank you. So, we've already started the narrative process, as well as some of the financial pro formas for the Market Association. And I think we have sort of early-stage identification of the different opportunities to secure funding for development. So, those are probably the two areas, I would say, of narrative and financial analysis that are the farthest along. That said, we need to have more of these public forums, we need to have more, probably smaller group engagement meetings to get feedback. Obviously, the farmers and, I would say, some of the other vendors at the Athens Art Guild probably need a little more time and surveying to collect some data. So, we'll see a lot of that between October and December. I would like to have, by the beginning of 2019, a more thorough written document in terms of viability and a business plan for the farmer's market. The other piece, obviously, is that the farmer's market, although they have a lease agreement with the property owners at the Market on State, are also looking at their own fundraising strategies as well. So, any type of future relocation, they're part of this partnership, so there's going to have to be investment on their part. So, a lot of attention will probably be paid over the next six months or so, developing some of their market and fundraising planning as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Crowe?
Thank you for being here. I'm looking forward to Thursday at the Walter Rotunda as well.
Well, me, too.
I wonder if you could just give us sort of briefly some of those site needs that the farmer's market is looking for? And also, when you talk about the recreation campus, what that really, what are the borders of that campus? Is it simply from whatever the auto parts place is now, all the way through the dog park to 33? Is that, that's the total distance? Okay. And what are some of the site needs that the...
I think there's been a lot of changes with the Food Safety Modernization Act, so outdoor markets have, I wouldn't say have been scrambling, but trying to seek new solutions in terms of some of the amenities. One of the aspects, I think, of being on the community center's campus is some of those amenities are already available, so access to public restrooms, easier access to probably water and sewer, even many of our market vendors are using all sorts of different wireless payment processing at the market, as well as the SNAP benefits that many of our customers use at the market as well. So, you know, good wireless connections, maybe some other connectivity would be great. One of the things we've really learned in our summer surveys, and I think we'll see more as we go into the fall and winter survey process, is we've been asking a lot of people in terms of what would be their preference in terms of transportation. And we see a lot of people already biking to the market, but when you talk to those bicyclists, you know, they're usually crossing at the light at Lowe's. So, there's, I think, a lot of interest in having the market on the other side of East State Street. And we hear, especially from young families, and I think from other folks, that a market that was, had greater access to the bike path would make it much more pedestrian-friendly, as well as bike commuter-friendly as well. So, a lot of positive feedback, I would say, from that demographic, that people would like to see the market more accessible, other than by-vehicle transportation.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Come on.
Yes, Mayor Patterson?
Just a comment. In that, if council's aware, I'm sure, you know, 2014, 2015 timeframe, not only was then Athens Foundation, now Athens County Foundation, but also the Boynum Beach School, was heavily involved in surveying the farmer's market, patrons' needs, wants, desires. So, I have to give a lot of credit to Robin Stewart, who was real helpful back in 2014 and 15 with, as councilors, the evening this room was filled with people who make all kinds of goodness at the farmer's market, with them coming forward, asking about location. The other thing, too, to share with council, again, as just a refresher, is that through the process that was undertaken with the Athens Foundation, Athens County Foundation, was looking at sites, and they assessed a lot of sites, a lot of different sites, and a couple of things that kept coming up over and over again was affordability of some of the sites as they were being reviewed, among other things, utilities and whatnot were also on that agenda, and size was another strong consideration, is where is there five acres plus or minus of usable ground within the city that is somewhere that's easily defined? So, just wanted to throw that out there, that this is, I empathize with Leslie in terms of the efforts that were in the early 2000s, and now it has been a long road in looking at a more, an improved site for farmer's market and one with a little more security.
But I think we've learned a lot since 2004. I mean, I can't believe that I've worked on this project for almost 15 years now, so we've got to get it done at some point. But what we've learned is that there's a great resilience with the market, that it is a beloved institution, not just within the city of Athens, but really throughout Appalachia, Ohio. And so, having some of the convening that the Athens County Foundation did in recent years, the support that we've had for many of our partners, especially the educational institutions since the mid-aughts, has, I think, if anything, just helped us become better learners on this journey, even with some of the setbacks. And when we get to this end goal, it's going to be spectacular, and it's just going to be, I would say, the market is already a jewel in the crown of our local Athens food economy, but it can be so much more. And I also really want to give a shout-out to just the artisans and the makers and the sort of creative placemaking entrepreneurs that we have in this region. So, to see some of the evolution of the Athens Art Guild, you know, I think back to all the work that Councilmember Carol Patterson and I did also to develop stronger arts markets in the community, and the great work through the Athens Municipal Arts Commission. You know, all of this is converging, and we are well-known as a community that really, I would say, acknowledges the entrepreneurial opportunities that folks at all levels need support for in this community. So, again, thanks to the city of Athens for being a partner all along the way, and don't forget, we still have the Armory Project, too, to work on. So, I think that's what I was talking about the last time I was here. So, ACNET really wants to continue to be a strong partner, and we look forward to many, many, many years, and hopefully decades in the future, to make the city of Athens even a greater place for us, who love it, and for the folks who want to come and visit.
Councilmember Reisner?
Just one question. Does any part of this project, do you see it being restricted by the 100-year floodplain rules and regulations?
I think, you know, it's always a concern, as someone who operates business incubators and floodplains, both in Athens and Nelsonville, it's always something that I'm sort of registering. Again, I think it depends on what kind of structures we might want to pursue. I think there's, again, a lot of ingenuity and learning from some of our national consultants in terms of what would be appropriate site development, what would be appropriate even parking, you know, whether it's permeable parking or other design features that I think we could incorporate.
Any other questions or comments of council members? And any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, come on up and identify yourself, and if you're with an organization or group.
My name is Parker Smith, and I am the Off-Campus Commissioner for the Ohio University Student Senate. I live at 85 West State, apartment B. But actually, I also work as a research assistant at the Boynum Beach School. And I was going to come up here after about three, this is a perfect time to talk about it, too. With the social enterprise ecosystem, you probably already work with us and know exactly who I'm talking about, Faith Knutson and John Glazer, but definitely I...
Another A R C Power Grant.
Oh, nice, yeah, yeah, very exciting. It pays me, so it's important. But I just wanted to recommend to you that reaching out to them, that's exactly the type of stuff I've been working on with them over the past couple of months, and they'd be very interested in that. That was all.
Great, I appreciate the comment. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you for being with us tonight, Leslie, and we'll move on then to our next committee meeting, that is Planning and Development, with Councilmember Fall as Chair, and Councilmembers Reisner, McGee, and Grace. If you'll give us just a moment, and we'll relocate, and then we'll be ready to start business. And we do have two items tonight, the Devil's Kettle Brewing, and then also a request for signage on East Park Drive.
Signage, that's a right-of-way question. I don't feel good.
Councilmember Fall?
Thank you. Tonight, we have some right-of-way issues to talk about, which is, it was all right-of-way all night. Imagine my excitement about that one, right? Okay, first, the Devil's Kettle Brewing is a right-of-way for driveway and their patio. This has both been through all the various planning commission and the other people who have to sign off on engineering and those sort of things. So, it's pretty straightforward. It would be a 10-year revocable license. Questions?
Do we have information from...
Yeah.
Does it already exist?
It's, I think they want to...
I could speak to that. No, it already exists. It's something we discovered, basically, as we were dealing with the outdoor food operation.
Right.
You know, looking at the aerial relative to the right-of-way at the intersection of Terrace and Columbus Road, and that existing facilities there at the Devil's Kettle are in the right-of-way. So, this is an example of what, in the current version of the right-of-way legislation we proposed earlier, would go through via a special right-of-way permit, that, you know, you could consider doing as a, as some sort of modification of the current... consider doing as a, as some sort of modification of the current revocable license, if you decide to change it. I don't have any issue with the, with the proposed use of the right-of-way in this. It does not interfere with our ability to safely operate the right-of-way for other use.
It's been through the planning commission.
Right.
I just, there was, there were images on our drive earlier. I don't see them.
They disappeared.
They disappeared?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, yeah, it was like I was trying to pull it up. I'm like, it was here.
Right, and I have them, I have them in one of my emails.
Okay. Yeah, I just, but I thought from, from the images we received earlier, that it was an existing structure, like the patio and parking, that it's already there.
How did it already get there?
I don't know, like the porches on Palmer Street, you know, it got built at some point along the way, and it didn't have to have a separate permit that went through at the time for, for the expansion, you know, when it changed from a, from a used car lot to a, to a brewery. Now, there have been some other things that they've had to get permits for, like the-
But it's always been a business there of some kind, so.
Yep, the patio itself was expanded when it went to the, you know, be the brewery. That wasn't part of it.
They put some structures on it.
Yeah, and they, recently, they built a, well, I mean, the food buggy went to start serving out there, and they built some structure around that, and then we said, hey, look, you can't build a permanent structure in the right-of-way, so they modified that. But this, in the process of reviewing that, we said, oh, wait, wait a minute, the right-of-way is pretty wide here at the, at the bottom of Terrace, and so we need to put it through the revocable license process.
Makes sense in a weird sort of way.
And for those of you who saw, did see the image before it disappeared, you know, it was right where Terrace Dog Legs and comes down to Columbus Road, where Service Safety Director was saying it's wide through there, the public right-of-way. But it's not impeding anything in terms of traffic flow through there.
I'm sure this isn't the only business that's on our right-of-way that we're not aware of, or not much we can do about it now, so.
I mean, you could-
Tear them down?
You can revoke them.
Well, I mean-
Which has happened.
Which has happened, yeah.
But you could have a case where a business has built on our right-of-way, and has been doing business on our right-of-way for many years, and then suddenly we discover that, guess what, hey, you're on our right-of-way.
Normally, we wouldn't, you know, if we discovered someone needs a revocable license, we'll come in and say, hey, look, you need, you need a revocable license. We don't just automatically make people move unless they're interfering with the ability to operate the, the public rights-of-way for whatever purpose, whether it be moving a utility, or moving traffic, or moving something else, or if there's a construction project. And in those instances, there's a construction project, we, you know, and the city needs to expand or do something, if someone's occupying an area there, they're just there by permission, they're not there by any type of easement that would give them kind of some overarching right, and it would be a situation where you tell them to move. But we wouldn't just tell them to move just to, just to move. We might tell them they have to get a license, but not tell them they have to move.
Other questions down here?
This is just a general question, but for the right-of-way with the city, are those larger than the sidewalks for the main part?
I'm sorry, I'm not-
When, when you have your sidewalks in, in the city, is the city right-of-way, is it larger on both sides?
So Councilmember McGee, to Councilmember Reisner's question during the last discussion, we talked about bearing widths.
Yeah.
In some instances, the sidewalks and a couple feet past the sidewalk are in the rights-of-way. In some instances, the rights-of-way go much further than the sidewalks, almost to the faces of the building. In, in, in some instances, the sidewalks actually are outside of the right-of-way, if it's an area, a narrower right-of-way. An example of that is Schaefer Street, south of West Washington, there are some sidewalks in there that sit outside of the right-of-way. Now, they appear as though they would be public sidewalks in the right-of-way, but because of the width of the street in that area, they happen to sit outside of the right-of-way. So in most cases, those sidewalks do sit inside the right-of-way, along with maybe a foot or two past, but, you know, I wouldn't make that assumption without checking a couple other sources.
Thank you. Any other questions? Audience? Okay. So that will be brought up next Monday. Next is request for signage at 26 East Park Drive, which is in the area of the pool, that area down there, the access road to get back to the sewage treatment plant and such. There is a picture on the drive of what is proposed. This would be a multiple-person entity sign that would be put up. Nick, just tell, tell us who you are and where you live.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name's Nicholas Fittner. I live at 24 Canterbury Drive here in Athens, Ohio. This project is a sign request for 26 East Park Drive, which is a drive that runs perpendicular to East State Streets on the south side of East State Street. I do have some examples to show, if you can please, the council, to bring them up to you, and then I can also pull them up.
We do have some on our, on our drive.
Oh, you do have them on your-
But I'm not sure that's going, whether it can be put on, so everybody can see it.
Let's see. Might be a sneak.
So.
Give me one second.
That same day.
And we need Scott to come back.
You said it's on the city council drive?
Yeah, I'm not sure if you're going to be able to pull it up, but if we can maybe get a picture of what you've brought.
Okay.
Yeah, the drive, the council drive is mostly just council.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a-
So maybe we can get Scott to put that on? Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Natural.
I've got it here.
So can you describe the, just briefly?
Yes.
This is another straightforward, you know, request for a signage in public right-of-way.
Yeah, I mean, I think the sign is straightforward, I think the location is the odd, odd one here. 26 East Park Drive is located about a quarter of a mile down the road from East State Street. So this is a request to put a sign on the East State Street right-of-way. The purpose of this sign would be to direct potential visitors to 26 East Park Drive, but the other, the priority part of the sign that we've made is for city of Athens entities. We noticed that besides the community center, there really is not a sign for the city pool or for the water treatment plant, so our thought, kind of a gesture of goodwill toward the city, was to be, to make that the focus of the sign, and then to list the other entities that are at 26 East Park Drive. The sign is about, I think it's four and a half feet wide by about nine feet tall. It would sit on a concrete foundation that's about a foot off the ground. Location-wise, would be at that intersection of 26 East Park and East State Street, it would be the, I guess that would put it at the southeast corner of the roadway. It's, the sidewalk just kind of jogged there, and the new sidewalk that was put in place, and the sign would be a little bit more to, it's about five feet off the sidewalk at that location. It would not be an illuminated sign. It can be designed to be illuminated, we, again, we just didn't know where the electric would be coming from to do that. And I think, I've seen these signs go up, from a standpoint of how long it would take, usually they put the, dig the hole, an inspector for the state inspects the hole. It's a fun job.
I know.
The concrete is, is put down, and there's a pylon, it's actually just basically a large pole that's put down in that pole, and then the concrete foundation is put in place. Once that's set, they come back in and put the signs. Usually, the process itself is about a week to install.
Great. One thing that I think should be noted, you know, East State Street is not known for its signs, they're like, the signage of East State Street leaves a lot to be desired. And I think that this particular sign, and the way that it's put together, and the way that the city and planning commission worked with this, could act as actually a really good model to maybe get more signs that are multi-company signs, because that way, being able to have people, when they come and ask to put a sign, we can maybe suggest that these are better than putting an individual sign, and then another sign, and then another sign. So that's, that's one thing that this process is probably, if there, that it's more, it has more flexibility because it has so many eyes looking on it. You know, and, and if we can get people to look at these things and say, hey, you know, that's a really nice way of making multiple businesses be known, and be able to point to them, that might be something that we can go to in the future, because I think that's something that people would really think about on an East State Street, and it would just really be nice with all our new infrastructure that went down there. So I appreciate working with the city and making a multi-use sign. Is there questions, other questions?
Yeah, I'm really struck by the, the design. It looks exactly like the model left out of 2001: A Space Odyssey.
The sign does?
The sign.
That was a little bigger.
I'm looking at the dimensions of it, four by nine by whatever, which is the square of the first three positive integers. Okay, who thought of this?
While we've tested it, size-wise, for basically a vehicle, as well as for pedestrian, oftentimes what you get when you're designing solely for a vehicle is the sign's way up in the air, and there's a pylon, and it's basically a bunch of kind of open space down below. But then we thought, you know, the thing is, you know, with there being a lot more pedestrian traffic on East State Street now, that would make more sense to get the actual message of the sign down lower, to visually see it.
Right, yeah. Looks nice.
Okay, and you have, Councilmember Grace down here.
I'm, I'm just curious about the material of the sign above the base, and as far as the changeability of the names, I, I assume those would, because we, we can't quite promote an entity that's not there yet.
No, no, we don't want to do that.
So, so I'm just wondering what the material of the sign is, and, and how, how it would be changed, how the names on there could, could be changed.
Okay, thank you for the question, Councilwoman Grace. The idea is that it is applied vinyl, so the, the actual sign itself is aluminum, painted aluminum. It would hold the color pretty well, the painted aluminum, as opposed to doing the whole sign in vinyl and covering it up. And then each one of the entities is basically an applied vinyl that can be removed over time and placed back in with another one. If it were to fade too much, then we would recommend, you know, removing all the vinyl, refurbishing and painting the sign, and putting up new vinyl. So that was the idea. I think when I originally proposed this to, reached out to our council representative, was that we had listed another entity up there, and that was the potential that if the Athens farmer's market would go there, it's not a city of Athens entity necessarily, it's more of its own thing. So we kind of gave it its own location on the sign, and not listed it as a city of Athens. And then, since we know that's not quite really, you know, a solid plan by any means yet, we kind of removed that, but the idea is that it can change over time what's listed on that sign. And we could also, you know, we're not opposed to leaving a little bit more space on the city of Athens entities in case something else were to change in there, so it's not like, oh, now we got to squeeze, you know, another entity down lower on the sign.
And I believe Service Safety Director Stone had a comment.
Sure, and forgive me, Mr. Fittner, for not having looked carefully at this prior to it, you've been working with the city planner, that was the direction that I gave him back when he approached me originally, is, hey, look at this, this as a, as a, as a concept. This isn't without precedent, in that there are portions in the city where there is a sign at one location that directs folks to businesses in another location. Indeed, the mayor's given both me and the planner some guidance to try to look at where this is appropriate around the city, namely in situations where there's an arterial, and then there are businesses off the arterial that maybe otherwise would seem hidden. Another example is the Station Street Business Complex over off of West Union Street right now, it seems somewhat hidden, and so, a quick question for you, is the position that you've selected here and shown to the council members, is it on the right-of-way, or is it on the community center parcel?
Right.
It, it was hard to tell, because I was using the, the survey work that was done by Buckley Group when, on the East State Street.
Okay.
It appeared to me that, for the most part, the sign will be in the right-of-way, at least the majority of the foundation, so that I was considering it in the right-of-way. It did not seem like there's enough space, there's a little white shed, I'm not sure what its purpose is.
I know what its purpose is, it's pretty important.
So we wanted to stay, we wanted to stay off, so.
Yeah, yeah, don't move it.
No, 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 yeah.
Yeah, all the water to the east side will get shut off.
Yeah, in the end, you know, we're not opposed to a billboard on that building. There you go, right?
So, so, and the reason I ask is it has to process. If it's in the right-of-way, it's revocable license. If it's on the parcel, it's, it's purely city land, and you do with it-
Well, you would have to fill out applications.
Pretty much whatever you want, yeah, on the city land, and you, you know, you put it there. It is against zoning to have off-site signs on a parcel, so what we've traditionally done, an example where, like I said, it's not without precedent, is on the East Park, I'm sorry, East State Street access road at the very, very end, Holzer Clinic on their parcel has a sign that directs people to businesses that are further down that access road, and that was a, a kind of a negotiation when we moved the access point, and Holzer funded that, installed that on their property, and then sought a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. So whichever, whichever place it lands, we'll work through the correct process.
Right.
But either way, council will have to approve it.
Question would be if it landed in dual, like, if it was-
Fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty. Please don't make it fifty-fifty. You know, that would just get, and then there's this other issue of, of East Park Drive, drive, right-of-way, and easements that we're talking about, too. So this area looks easy, but it certainly isn't easy when it comes to easements and things that you don't really see unless you look at maps, sort of thing. So that's going to be a question that we're going to have to look at. And so the, the next point would be to, I think, have to establish whether it's going to be fully on the city or fully on the right-of-way, and that will determine which way you go through either application process or a right-of-way process.
And I'll, I'm sorry, I mean, I'll talk with the legislature, I mean, it's possible that you just pass an ordinance that approves it, it doesn't really matter, you know, because council approves the laws anyway, and we just say, yeah, this particular case, we'll do a one-off and approve it because of the grayness associated with it. As long as council has ordained it, it should be okay.
Right, okay. Okay.
I just had one other question about, given that this sign is, is directing traffic to a location off of East State Street, but it's after East Park Drive, I'm assuming that there's not a space really, like, in front of CVS, in terms of like to put it before, because I, you know, having the sign come after the road that you need to turn on, even if it's very nearly after, I think sometimes causes confusion.
Yes, that is correct. I mean, I think that the best practice is to put it where you think the primary traffic is coming, on that right side, and that would be on the CVS. Again, that, that right-of-way was to-
There's just not enough space.
Yeah, not enough space, and there really wasn't enough space in the actual parcel to try to request it from them to do it as well, because they have those turn lanes. And it's something, I think there's also a pole right there, just seemed like every spot was pretty clearly tailored.
It's a very confusing spot, because there's a lot going on underground, too.
Yeah.
Everything that you see on top, it's probably multiplied underground, so, okay. The mayor?
I just have two kind of questions, small nuances, but how, how, what's the depth of this sign?
Depth is 18 inches.
So 18 inches wide?
Yeah.
Well, deep. And as you see this, would it be kind of a matte, non-glossy image, in other words, it won't have any reflective elements to it?
The, we are proposing that the applied vinyl be reflective, the actual, the message on there, but not the sign itself, not the, the background gray or the blue.
Okay, I guess my question is if it were, or comment, is it-
there, but not the sign itself, not the background gray or the blue.
Okay. I guess my question is if it were, or comment, is if it were a glossy vinyl of any type and in the evening, if it's reflecting back at someone, could it impede their ability to see because you've got your headlights reflecting back at you off of something like this? And so it'd be more matte in terms of its finish or flat or whatever?
It can be. It's not necessarily critical to the success of getting, conveying the message. I mean, most of those entities are not evening practicing in the 26 East Park Drive building nor really in, you know, the city pool, the waste treatment. And I think most of those places, people know where they're already going if they're going to that location off-hours. So I don't see that as critical to the success. It could just be a matte sign.
I guess one last comment that I've been thinking about is, in the unfortunate event that this would be struck by a vehicle, you know, we do have snow events or other events, and if this were struck, you know, maintaining it, repairing it, who would that be on?
We would take full responsibility for the sign. So.
You being BDT.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not spelling it out. I'm also, not only am I a client at 26 East Park Drive, but I'm a part-owner of the building as well. So if any damage or anything were to occur to sign by a vehicle or, you know, weather event or anything like that, we would be responsible for its repair and or replacement.
And that's what other entities do. It's, is it more of a concern because there's the top part that says the city sort of things? I mean, is that, is that what your concern is? Is because it has city on it, then that we would be responsible to repair it if somebody ran into it?
I think it was just more of a general comment is that there should be some level of an agreement in terms of maintenance and upkeep and repair if it needed to be repaired.
That just makes sense.
Well, yeah. That's the, some of that's taken care of if they go through a right-of-way with bonding and such. So and then the other method would probably be require maybe something on that application.
Yeah. My mayor interject. Mr. Mayor, I would think it would make sense on the revocable license to put that language in there, you know, some kind of timeline if any damage were to occur when it, you know, repaired needs to be made.
Which we would hope everybody would do if their sign was backed by a car. It is a commercial. Okay. Any other questions? Any questions from audience? Thank you. That's the end of mine.
City and Safety Services, Councilmember Butler, Chair, and Councilmember Kotsis in Fall.
I believe all entities are present. It looks like it's just, yeah, we're all here. Thank you, President Isley. We have one item on the city service safety agenda this evening, and that is specifically the fire, God bless you, the fire headquarters grant to replace an exhaust ventilation system. Chief Reimer, I visited with Chief Reimer at the main station, station number one, and he was successful in and was awarded, the department, the city was awarded a $51,000 Assistance to Firefighter Grant. Specifically, that would be to provide a diesel exhaust system which helps remove diesel exhaust from the bay, from the building. As we know, our firefighters reside and work in the building. They sleep there in off-hours. They conduct a lot of business and work there as well. Maintenance of the equipment, there's a lot that happens in there. So this is essential to their safety and well-being to the facility as well. Additionally, I think it's important to know that station two, and I can be corrected by the administration if I'm, if I speak out of step here, but my understanding as well is that the administration was successful last year through a BWC grant and paying for a diesel exhaust system at station number two on Richland Avenue. Thank you. Okay. So this would help then fulfill the safety of both stations with this, with this grant. Additionally, there's a request from the administration to also purchase a updated and more utilitarian, better-built boat trailer. As you know, we do water rescue within our fire department and unfortunately, it's, we've seen, we've seen some occurrences in the past couple of years in which this was a necessity and our first responders were there quickly. This would help them do their job again safer and more efficiently. The new trailer would approximately cost $11,000. It would be a double-stacking trailer which would be able to fold currently. And I visited the chief and was witness to the current system that they're using, which is a fixed trailer that was a modified landscape trailer. So it's not as efficient and they're talking about a boat with a motor on it that's upwards to 500 pounds. So to try to lift a boat from the second layer of a trailer down to the ground is not something easy to do and cannot be done by two or three people. The newer, the newer trailer would be more efficient and would be safer, faster, and better, better equipment essentially. Also potentially help reduce the potential for injury and again would be a quicker deployment into the water.
A question for you, since the boat trailer is not on the agenda tonight, so we weren't aware of that information, is there a grant available as there was in the case of the diesel exhaust van or sufficient monies in the accounts to pay for those or?
The, what we know, in talking with the chief, is that the exhaust system is less than what they received for the grant. And so the, there is the residual from that grant that can be applied to the boat trailer as well as monies in his budget. So I would, I want to kind of echo something that Member Butler said, and I've had long conversations not only with Chief Reimer but also with the other firefighters that, you know, aside from this increasing their speed at which they can deploy and what their capacity is to carry out to the river, it's also, I see it as a real health and safety issue with them having to literally lift the boat off of the trailer. I mean, this is, I see this as reducing injuries significantly. And also speaking to the exhaust system, which is also equally important, recent conversations that I've had with firefighters who are stationed out of station two where we do have that exhaust system, they have indicated to me that that system is fantastic and works well at reducing emissions in the station because when they start up their trucks and are rolling out, there's diesel that's building out into the maintenance bay or into the bays themselves. And so they've said that this system has really mitigated that health concern with the exhaust being in the bay. And as you know, they're, they're bunks, you know, where they're staying is right there in those stations too. Both of these, I think, are good, sound health and safety enhancements to not only headquarters but to our water rescue effort.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I may add, I inadvertently neglected to add this bit of information as well, that the city share for the grant is 10%.
Okay. That's what I was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Kotsis?
Yes, thank you. So, you know, and, you know, council members have taken tours of the, of the buildings up there and we're dealing with a building that's from, you know, the late 60s, early 70s. And we've gone underneath and seen how they've kind of reinforced it because the equipment has gotten bigger and heavier. And I think, I don't know if we have more, more vehicles in there, but has, I assume that this technology wasn't in existence back then. We're retrofitting something that we, that we currently have. But at the same time, has, has the, you know, and this is just, because I was thinking, oh, the exhaust must just be getting greater and greater. But the efficiency of the vehicles has also gotten better and better. Is there, I mean, I, you know, my, my query was, what is, is there, is there more of an issue now with today's trucks and their size versus, you know, am I making my, I don't know if I'm making.
No, I believe, I believe the question is, is making sense. And I may be able to offer a stab at it and maybe the city service safety director as well, I'll acquiesce if, if there's something that comes to mind.
Shoot first.
This is your area of expertise.
Sure. We just pay attention more to environmental risks and threats to our employees. You know, I mean, in the bad old days, you know, we broke the thermometers and played with the mercury in the thermometers and nobody cared. I just worked a shift at the fire department a few, a few weeks ago.
A full 24 hours.
A full 24-hour shift where I spent the night with the firefighters and went there and they were telling me stories about the bad old days where, you know, guys would smoke, you know, chain smoke while they were there in the, in the bunk room. And then they, they talked about when they made the rule that, you know, you had to put your cigarettes up in the window so that the smoke at least went out the, out the window. So to say what's changed is we've just been getting better and better about taking care of our workforce because we have a responsibility to our workforce in the long term. If we do something to break them, that is to say, expose them to carcinogens and everything else, then in the long term, we as a city and as a state are responsible to them. So I think this goes towards, towards protecting the health of our workforce. We have a system like this at the mechanic's base down on 387 East State Street, or West State Street, rather, and it plugs into the exhaust basically. And so they can run a vehicle indoors and the exhaust then goes through a ventilation system, is cleaned and then put outside the building so it doesn't, it doesn't build up and you can, you can turn them on inside. And that's, this is something similar for the, for the.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. If there's nothing else, and other further questions or comments from public or the administration, then that would conclude the agenda. Thank you.
All right. We've got Finance and Personnel Committee, Chair, Councilmember Reisner, and Councilmembers Butler and Crowell.
Thank you, Madam President. We have three items under Finance and Personnel. Our new citywide credit card policy, fire pumper truck note renewal, and various appropriations and transfers. First item will be the new citywide credit card policy. So we have the auditor in the audience tonight who knows everything there is to know about it. So I will defer to her and let her speak to it.
Not so sure about that, but thank you, Member Reisner. I'm just here to give you an update on this. We've been talking about this since last year. The process was started last July by the state auditor at the state level. And this spring, I sent out sample drafts that we had to the administration. We've been talking about it in our auditor meetings, the mayor and the finance chair and I. And so the bill was finally, after many changes, was signed into law by Kasich on October or August 2nd. So there was a little bit of kerfuffle last week about people worrying about having their policy in place by November 2nd, which is the effective date. However, the law reads three months from the effective date. So we actually have until February 2nd, I believe. However, I think we'd all agree it would be a good idea to have this in place by the end of the year and start the new year off with this policy in place. And so we are, you know, just down to tweaking it. We have drafts and the, one of my main worries is to make sure that we have everything in our policy that the, the law asks for. It's, it's not really clear and easy to read and there are choices for certain things in there, whether to have the finance officer in charge of the cards or appoint a compliance officer. And we did talk about this before because originally that was how they wrote it. We had to appoint a compliance officer. Well, that person cannot use a credit card. And that makes it a little more difficult. And so we have the choice now of how we want to go. So anyway, Service Safety Director sort of knew to this process. I believe we're going to be talking about it tomorrow afternoon for a little bit. I've put everything out there. I've made my own list of what needs to be in there so we can check it. We did ask for some feedback and I believe council, I know council, you know, sent some questions that we haven't really addressed all of them yet. And same with, you know, at least one other department. And so that's something that I really wanted to do with other members of the administration. So we're going to start that tomorrow. And that's just my update for now. Like I said, we have a little bit of time, but hopefully we can have this done in the next few weeks and get it passed this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Administration, Safety Director, do you have any ideas or?
We're going to work closely with the auditor's office and the Finance Committee to bring forward a policy that's workable and legal.
Right. Madam President, do you?
Sounds good.
Okay. Next item, the fire pumper truck note renewal. As I understand it, from our last discussions, we were talking about paying down $100,000 on the note and that would require a new note to be issued?
Correct.
Okay.
The legislation is prepared by a bond counsel, which many of you have seen many times. So what we owe right now is about $423,000 and we've been paying down $100,000 per year. $50,000 of that is from the university and then we match it with our $50,000. So then we'll roll the note over and owe $323,000 next year. The paperwork came. I left the copies on the clerk's desk on my way in and so you'll be seeing that at the next regular meeting, I assume.
Sounds right. Administration, any comments on this?
Nope. Got to pay the pumper truck.
Well, sooner the better. I understand we may need a new one pretty soon, so.
You may. Ideally, we'd get this paid off before we bought a new one.
Ideally, yes.
Having two car payments is a problem.
Can be. And last but not least, appropriations and transfers. Go with the auditor again. I have a few notes here. We have a NOPEC Energize Community NEC Grant for reimbursement. And there's various things that's going to be done with it. Would you like to speak about that?
Sure. I don't know a lot about this process, but we received an email from Patty in the mayor's office. And so this will be out of transportation. It is, we have some money for it, but the appropriation for that will be $9,200. And that's mainly all I know about that.
I can speak to it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, it's a grant basically, but it's a reimbursement-type grant. This is for solar, solar lights, basically lights that are powered by solar energy and then LED for bus shelters. So that's the reason why we're going through Fund 214 with transit. And then we had to buy them first. They're going to go on six shelters around the city, some of which haven't been installed yet because they're being installed as part of the East State Street project. And then after we do all the work and get it done, we will apply and get that money put back into the transit fund or whatever fund you see fit to remit it to after it's, after it's spent. So, but this is 100% reimbursement.
Right.
We just have to do it first.
So other than East State Street, where are you thinking about putting?
I don't have that information at the tips of my fingers at this moment, Councilmember Reisner, but I can get it for you and provide to the.
Just out of curiosity, like, I don't like getting rained on and waiting for a bus.
We have light then when you're waiting.
That's right.
And I feel safe.
I don't have anything else here about other appropriations or transfers, do you? Is there anything else coming along?
Well, yes.
Next Monday?
We need to transfer money from the parking fund to the parking garage debt fund, parking garage fund, to pay a note due. garage fund, to pay a note due coming up. We need that done, that will need to be suspended on second reading if possible, it's due October 19th. I put it out there, but I wasn't at our meeting last week, so I don't know if it was discussed, but the money is there, we just need to transfer it from the parking garage fund to the parking garage debt fund. Need to be suspended on second reading.
Yeah, it was discussed during the auditor meeting last week.
Where does that leave us in terms of the debt now?
On the parking garage itself, the renovations?
The renovations, yes. It was around $2 million, I think we're now down...
Yeah, we're down like 1.1, I think. I don't have the debt schedule in front of me. I know that our plan was not to pay the whole amount off. I think we're going to make a similar, you know, we had to pay the whole thing and roll it over and then, and then, you know, pay a portion of it down.
Right.
And I want to say we talked about $100,000 on this as well, but I have to go back to my notes from the meeting.
That sounds about right, yeah.
The thing about the parking garage debt is that was a bond, which means it'll last over 10 years. Parking garage renovations, principal outstanding is about one and a half million. It's about 1.9 that we needed, as I recall, or borrowed anyway. And so that's only been a few years, and we've started on that. But our payments don't change. There's a schedule for that. There's no pay-down early or rolling over anything. It's a bond schedule. If it lasts 10 years or more, it has to be a bond as opposed to a loan or note. So, yeah, we pay $125,000 principal and then $38,000 plus for interest.
I think on that project, auditor heck, it did start at 1.9, but then with change orders as it went on, it actually...
Yeah, the elevator.
$2.2 million, but, yeah, I think you're right that we're close to one and a half now as we've been paying down.
We borrowed the full amount, and the same with the pool. Pool comes in for less than what we borrowed. We still have that debt obligation, even if we don't spend it all for that. I think that's, that's the situation.
Okay. So Monday we'll introduce, and then on second, second reading, we'll suspend?
Thank you.
Any other items that the administration?
No, I do want to just go back because just NOPEC was bandied around, and I think it'd be important for the public to know and the viewing audience that that's the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council is where that grant came from.
Okay.
Okay.
And there's the SOPEC too, which is?
Southeast Ohio Public Energy Council.
Okay.
Okay.
It's good to know your anagrams. Well, other than that, I have nothing further.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll consider ourselves adjourned at 8:55 PM, and we'll see you next Monday night for our regular session on October 1st.